Oh, please use your inside voices, be respectable of your neighbors. Thank you, please have a seat.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Convict for Public Meetings 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure. Rule 49, The Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings: Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted; demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted; disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted; banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted; backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted; clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search; health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted; cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room; individuals must remain seated; public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment; small handheld devices may be used only while seated; and the user must refrain from interfering with the view or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
Good morning. Good morning. Once again, welcome to today's city council meeting. Please take your seats and silence your listening devices. The meeting will start momentarily. Thank you. Good morning, council members. The meeting will begin shortly. Please remember to log into your devices. Thank you. Good morning. Council meeting is about to convene. Please take your seats and silence your voices.
Five lines back. Seriously. Morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Your Honor. Morning. I'm putting me in focus, Sergeant at Arms.
What? Uh, I can't do those. I got a trainer now. I saw, I saw, uh, I saw.
Good morning. Good morning. The council will come to order. Thank you. Good morning. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Good morning, City Council. The roll call is now open. The quorum roll calls are not open. Please use your device. If you need support, please raise your hand. I will now call a voice vote if you have not used the e-device. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman Robinson, present. Alderman Nancy, not present. Alderman Hall, Alderman Hall, present. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present. Alderman Rodriguez, not present. I'll come back to the virtuals. Alder, Alderwoman Tabarez, not present. Alderwoman Scott, not present. Alderman Irvin, not present. Alderwoman Cruz, Alderwoman Cruz is present in the chambers. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not, not present. Alderman Vegas, not present. Alderwoman Mitt, Alderwoman is present. Alderwoman Clay, Alderwoman Clay is present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Thirty-eight members present. Um, so we do have a, a quorum. For the purpose of this meeting, there are a number of individuals or alders who have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation? Alderman Nancy, Rodriguez Tabarez, Rodriguez Sanchez, Vegas, Ramirez Rosa. So it's been moved. Thank you very much. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay in the opinion of the chair. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark the following alders as participating remotely and present on the quorum roll call.
Got them.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. The invocation this morning will be delivered to us by Pastor Damon, Damien Miguel Epps from the Mount Calvary Baptist Church of Chicago.
Let's bow our heads in a word of prayer. Most holy, wise, and sovereign God, we thank you for this blessed privilege to call upon your name this morning. We come before you today in humble hearts, lifting up mayor and city council that represents the fifty wards and districts of the city of Chicago. We recognize the immense responsibility that they carry in leading and governing this great city. And so, God, we pray for wisdom to work and discernment as they direct and grant them grace as they're guided in making decisions that will benefit the citizens of Chicago. Grant them the ability to stay before you and to seek your face and your will for the common good and to prioritize the needs for our community. I pray, God, that you would fill them with compassion as well as empathy each time they meet for the diverse population in which they serve. Help them to continue to understand the challenges and struggles faced by our people of Chicago. Grant them the courage to stand firm in the midst of their own convictions and help them to continue to make difficult choices when necessary. Strengthen, Lord, their resolve to uphold integrity, transparency, accountability, even in their leadership. And so, Master, we pray that you would continue to give them prudence, passion, protection, partnership, personal peace, provide for them, and then even prosper them. We pray, God, for the agenda that's set before us today, and please give us assurance of what would please you. Instead of, Lord, asking us to ask you to bless what we're doing, Master, we want to do what you're blessing. And so, Lord, we ask for your blessings upon the city of Chicago. It may be a place of unity, harmony, and prosperity. Guide the mayor and city council in every effort to create this city to be a safe, inclusive, and welcoming city to all. It's in your matchless name we pray. It's in your name we pray. That name that is above every name, that name that makes demons tremble, that name that will lift up a bowed down head, that name that depression has to flee, that name that can help save our community and our world, it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Man, thank you. You may be seated. This is the portion of the meet. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments. Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk?
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today. Our first speaker today is John Jansen.
Good morning. My name is John Jansen, and I am an Illinois resident, pro-life advocate, and sidewalk counselor. I have been deeply involved with litigation against the city of Chicago on issues relating to abortion and free speech over the course of my work in the pro-life movement for the last twenty-three years, and I'm here today to oppose the quiet zone ordinance currently under consideration. My organization, the Pro-Life Action League, has a history of confronting the city over laws that restrict individual rights, and we have a history of prevailing. The proposed quiet zone clearly violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, and if it passes, we will sue the city the day it becomes law, we will prevail, and the city will have to pay the cost of that litigation. In 2016, the Pro-Life Action League filed suit against the city of Chicago after the city denied multiple Freedom of Information Act requests for 911 call audios following medical emergencies at two Chicago abortion clinics. Realizing they didn't have a legal leg to stand on, the city opted to settle that lawsuit and released the 911 call audios that we were entitled to under the Freedom of Information Act. We will prevail in court on the quiet zone as well. Not only does the proposed ordinance violate the First Amendment, it seeks to solve a problem that does not exist. I file regular FOIA requests for 911 calls placed by Chicago abortion clinics, and in response to my requests, I have received zero calls complaining about noise made by the FPA abortion facility thus far in 2024. In the Public Safety Committee's own hearing on this matter last November, Dr. Allison Cowett, who works at the abortion facility in question, testified that the Chicago police do not enforce the existing noise ordinance. We have noise ordinances currently on the books that are simply not being enforced. The quiet zone ordinance is unnecessary, and it will only mire the city in litigation they are bound to lose, just like last year when another ordinance like this was attempted and thwarted by the city's own legal department. If the current ordinance is not being enforced, what makes you think a new one will be? After all the lost court battles on abortion and free speech, why pursue another losing effort? If you believe in free speech, or if you at least believe it's a bad idea to waste taxpayer money, and I sincerely hope you do, please do not advance this legislation one step further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Matt Moore.
Matt, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning, uh, mayor.
Good morning.
City clerk and council members. My name is Matt Moore. I am policy counsel for People for Bikes. We are the National Trade Association for the bicycle and e-bike industry. You can learn more about our organization and our work at our website, peopleforbikes.org. I have a few comments today on the proposed ordinance that would establish lithium ion battery testing requirements and create a new chapter four dash twenty-four in the municipal code. First, a proposed or the ordinance should allow the use of laboratories that are accredited by an international standards organization, otherwise known as ISO, and not only the three laboratories that are in OSHA's NRTL program. Relatively few e-bikes are currently tested, certified, and labeled by an NRTL. Very, very few. In fact, the leading manufacturers of drive systems, some of the safest available on the planet, do not use NRTLs to do their compliance testing. They use other third-party accredited laboratories. Should the ordinance become law in its current form, most e-bikes on the market today would become illegal to sell in Chicago. No one wants that. Secondly, you should know that product testing is a business, and it is a very competitive business. Some laboratories have developed branding to distinguish themselves in the marketplace. They've registered trademarks, and a product manufacturer must license that trademark for a fee. This should not be a component of a safety ordinance, as it adds nothing to the safety of a product. Thirdly, there are two generally accepted batteries, uh, testing standards for electric bicycles. Both standards result in safe electrical systems and batteries. Both of these standards should be included in the proposed ordinance. Lastly, there is a clear path here to creating an ordinance that protects the public and first responders by prohibiting the sale of unsafe, untested mobility devices and their batteries. The state of New York has just passed a bill that went through several amendments and had input from fire officials, the city of New York, testing companies, bicycle retailers, transportation and environmental advocates, and the bicycle industry. Chicago does not have to reinvent the wheel. We recommend that you consider a similar ordinance that balances the interests of the public, these stakeholders, and we are certainly ready to assist in that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Billy Rivi.
Uh, before I begin, I want to acknowledge that it would take me over fifteen hours, fifteen hours to read the names of the thousands and thousands of Palestinian children who have perished at the hands of the Israeli state since October seven. My three minutes today is hardly enough. Uh, but in the few moments I do have, I want to commend my alderperson, Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez, for having the moral courage to propose the city council's ceasefire resolution back in January and to continue to stand against the atrocities being inflicted upon the innocent Palestinians in Gaza. I am proud that Rosanna is my alderwoman, and we should all be grateful to have a beacon of moral clarity like Rosanna on the council and working for our city. Every day when I walk my dog in my neighborhood, I walk by a garden in my neighborhood, and there's a spot in the garden called the Garden of Hope where Rosanna and mothers from the community have planted flowers in remembrance of their children who have been lost to violence. This is a daily reminder to me of what Rosanna stands for as a woman and as an alderwoman and as a person. It's clear to me that Rosanna's heart lies with those who suffer unjustly, and it's clear that she has made it her mission to correct these injustices. And it's not just her efforts on the ceasefire vote. It's her tireless work supporting our city's new arrivals, her consistent presence on the picket line supporting workers, it's her years-long efforts to reopen Chicago's mental health clinics, and it's her authorship of Chicago's bodily autonomy ordinance. Rosanna has a proven track record of moral goodness and using her position to fight for justice. Anyone who says otherwise is lying. Again, I'm proud and grateful that Rosanna is my alderwoman, and I am proud that Chicago has stood with other American cities such as Oakland, San Francisco, Detroit, Minneapolis, and Atlanta in calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Those who lack Alderwoman Rodriguez's courage and clarity, those who continue to campaign against the ceasefire in Gaza are campaigning for one thing, and that's the continued slaughter of innocent Palestinians. Let me be clear to those people, history will not absolve you. I would be remiss if I also did not commend the other alder, alderpersons and Mayor Johnson who voted in favor of the ceasefire resolution. I would also encourage these alderpeople to support today's referendum for community power over policing. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Dan Schaefer.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for, uh, giving me this opportunity. Um, I do want to thank my alderwoman, Ruth Cruz, uh, who fearlessly represents the thirtieth ward. Uh, she hosted a, a ward evening or ward night where she had members of the community speak out about what they want to see, uh, the thirtieth ward doing, and, uh, she had a very cool, uh, activity where people had papers on the wall and you could actually write down, uh, suggestions, and I saw some, uh, suggestions of LGBT inclusion, and given that this is Pride Month, um, I would love to see, um, both in the northwest side, uh, more access to resources and support for the LGBT plus community, especially with the youth, but also on the south and the west sides. Uh, I've, I've volunteered with the Center on Halsted, uh, multiple times, and we've noticed that there were a large amount of people or youth that were coming from the south and the west side because they didn't have the essential resources in their own neighborhoods. And so, I would love for, uh, whether it be, uh, advanced funding or partnerships with individuals or organizations across the city, so individuals don't have to travel across the city just to access these basic resources. Some of them would be just a safe place to live, safe shelter. Certain life skills such as credits, uh, learning about credit, learning about how to read a proper lease agreement, uh, career coaching, um, or just in general, just making sure that they feel included. And so, there are certain organizations such as Brave Space Alliance, Howard Brown, um, that, that are there. Uh, I would love to see a, a more collaborative effort, and, um, I'm more than willing to partner with any alderperson that wants to do that, and, uh, my alderwoman, Ruth Cruz, has my contact info, so, uh, if anybody's interested, please feel free to reach out and look forward to partnering with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dodd McCulgan.
Hello. All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Dodd McCulgan, and I'm a co-chair with the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. I'm here today to speak in support of the ordinance to put the referendum for community power over policing on the ballot. This measure is not up for discussion or a vote today, but we see such urgency in the need to pass this ordinance that we must use every opportunity available to us to speak about it. That urgency comes from the continued loss of life at the hands of the Chicago Police Department, like the lives of Dexter Reed and Reginald Clay Jr. It also comes from the continuous attempts by the Fraternal Order of Police and the politicians they fund to undermine the gains we have made in police accountability. The Community Commission for Police Account, I mean, for Public Safety and Accountability gained power over data, documents, and records, and the FOP put a measure in their contract allowing the destruction of records. The CCPSA gained oversight over the police board, and the FOP put an arbitration measure in their contract allowing the police board to be circumvented, a measure this body opposed but was ultimately upheld by the courts. The CCPSA gained power over COPA, and COPA came under attack with the FOP president, John Katanzara, calling for their elimination days after they released the footage of Dexter Reed's murder, and with members of this body in the Police and Fire Committee plotting to undermine their investigatory powers. It's no surprise that Silvana Tabarez, Anthony Napolitano, and Jim Gardner would push this agenda, as they each received at least sixty thousand dollars in FOP donations in this recent 2023 election. These are among the forces that unite against progressive measures within the city council often. Any alderperson who seeks to stand on the progressive side of this struggle, the side of the people, should support the referendum for community power over policing, which would give a directly elected commission power over the FOP contract, among other additional powers. And you don't have to necessarily support the specific powers laid out in this, uh, referendum in order to vote in favor of this ordinance. You just have to be in favor of that decision being in the hands of the people. It should be up to us. I also want to use some of my time here to speak about one fighter for the people in this council, Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez. As someone who stands with workers and oppressed people, Rosanna finds herself under consistent attack from racists and reactionaries. It is because of her leadership in the struggle for community mental health, it's because she's an alder who you'll find on picket lines and at mass demonstrations that she faces this backlash on a consistent basis. But the people of this city stand with Rosanna against these attacks as she stands with us, and I hope she feels our support.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Koby Gilari.
Uh, good morning, everybody.
Just a second, sir. Just a second, please. Please, you may begin.
Okay, uh, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm Koby Gilari. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. I'm also a middle school science teacher in Inglewood, and I'm here today, uh, to urge y'all, uh, y'all being the city council, to support the ordinance for the referendum for community power over policing. I want to say congratulations to the new incoming Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability, and thank you to every, for everything that the outgoing interim commission has done, but I want to urge you city council members to make sure that this, this new commission can do more. The Fraternal Order of Police, just like Dodd said, has opposed accountability, tooth and nail fighting against every measure to hold police accountable since its inception. tooth and nail fighting against every measure to hold police accountable since its inception. And since the passage of ECPS in 2021, they've been trying to hold accountability back over and over again in meetings like this. So the referendum for community power over policing is going to give the new commission power over the FOP contract. It's going to give them power over the budget, as well as power over the hiring and firing of the police superintendent in addition to the powers that it currently has. It's also going to make it directly elected. That will make it more accountable to the people of Chicago. Again, like Dodd said, you don't even have to support what is in the referendum. You just have to support democracy. You have to support the right of the people to choose who polices their communities and how their communities are policed. You see, the murders of people like Dexter Reed, Pierre Laurie, Reginald Clay, Betty Jones, Adam Toledo, and so, so, so many more would not be happening if the people had the power to change the structure of policing and public safety in their communities. So I urge you once again to support the referendum for community power over policing. And lastly, I just want to say thank you, and I support you, Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez. Thank you for being a consistent fighter for working class and oppressed people from Chicago to Palestine to Puerto Rico and everywhere in between. We see you on these picket lines. We see you at these protests. We see you fighting for progressive policy in city council, and we support you, just like we support this referendum, just like it's the people of this city who are going to push history forward. We see people like Rosanna pushing history forward as well. And so every alderperson who is here and on Zoom, if you want to be on the right side of history, if you want people to look back in thirty years and smile at you, you should be doing what Rosanna is doing and not doing what those alderpersons who are bought and paid for by the FOP are doing. People like Napolitano, Tabarez, and Lopez, please do not be like them. Be like Rosanna. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Benita Ulisano.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here for the noise ordinance on behalf of the Illinois Choice Action Team and Family Planning and Associates. I organize the group that has volunteers at Family Planning and Associates every week. I wanted to play you a little bit of something from our waiting room. That's what you can hear. I hope you can hear.
We can't hear that. Just give us a summary.
I'll just tell you then.
Thank you.
It is loud. It shakes the windows, and it interferes with the clinic's ability to conduct the business. Make no mistake here, this is not an infringement on anyone's freedom of speech or First Amendment rights. The bubble zone is still upheld by the Seventh Circuit Court in 2017, and anti-chose protesters are in front of our clinic right now. No one is telling them they can't be there. No one is telling them they can't talk to protesters. No one is telling them that they can't say what they got to say. And believe me, they say plenty. I just got a text right now that they're in front of FPA. What I'm talking about here is amplification so loud that clinic staff cannot hear what their patients are saying. My volunteers cannot hear me if I have to give a directive for an active shooter or a rogue anti. When we met with Homeland Security, he said, "Every second counts, and you have seconds and not minutes to react." If I have to repeat myself, that could end up in lives lost, not only on the outside for my beloved team here, but for our beloved Family Planning and Associates staff who we love very dearly. We are not asking to tell people not to come and talk. That's not what this is about. The noise ordinance is guaranteeing their right to conduct business and our right to conduct our volunteers out in front of the clinic in a safe manner. Alderman Conway, we thank you so much. Thank you for being our champion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mia Combs.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Mia Combs. I'm a lifelong resident of the 33rd Ward, a former CPS student. And I am here to urge the council to vote yes to the ordinance to put the referendum for community power over policing on the ballot. The referendum for community power over policing would make the CCPSA directly elected with two appointed seats for those who don't qualify for elected office and expand its powers. The CCPSA would have the power to negotiate the FOP contract, set the CPD budget, hire and fire the superintendent of the police in addition to the powers it already has. We must protect our gains, continue to press for a more divisive say in who polices our communities and how our communities are policed. This fight is also to provide a counterweight to the FOP, a force which is clearly behind the pushback against progressive policy in this council. This is about providing democracy to a process ran by the rich and powerful instead of the communities who are actually policed. Silvana Tabarez, Anthony Napolitano, and Jim Gardner sat together at the back of the Police and Fire Committee meeting and working together to use a discussion about implementing a police accountability measure to criticize the CPOA. All three of these alders have, or as Dodd said, have received over $60,000 in donations in 2023. In 2023 alone, these three alderpeople received more donations from the FOP than any alder received since 2015, as well as Lopez and Beal receiving at least $10,000. Considering these donations, it would be utterly vacuous and an inane decision to ignore the influence of their financial incentive driving their opposition to and neglect for the needs of the community. I urge every alder and especially all members of the Public Safety Committee to listen to the community voices and support this ordinance. Lastly, as a lifelong resident of the 33rd Ward, I can particularly attest to the incredible action and progress which has been pushed forward by Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez. She has consistently fought for and defended the interests of her constituents. As a resident of the 33rd Ward, I have witnessed firsthand the inter-community solidarity and collective action she has organized in my neighborhood. It is her commitment to the liberation of oppressed people which has brought on the onslaught of the racist attacks against her and her character. Her work in passing the ceasefire resolution, advocating for treatment, not trauma, pushing for affordable housing, instituting participatory budgeting, sponsoring the ordinance for abortion sanctuary and trans sanctuary for trans people like me, they are all testaments to her commitment to safety, security, and prosperity and the survival of the people of Chicago. This is not the work of political interest but of a true community member who would be showing up protecting her people regardless of her civic title. I am incredibly proud to be a resident of the 33rd Ward, and I am incredibly proud to have Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez as my alder. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Maurice Wilbon.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Maurice Wilbon. My company is Gang Talk Assaulting.
Maurice, can you lift your mic up closer?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maurice Wilbon. My company is named Gang Talk Assaulting, Urban Translator LLC. I am confident that my company can assist the city in solving the difficulties we are experiencing with street organizations and the ones that are influenced by the activity and the messages. I am affiliated with one of the street organizations, but I am an affiliated member for positive and productive change. Consider this analogy. I strongly believe that it's impossible for anyone to have the ability to clean up the house or to rearrange the furniture if that one person doesn't live in a house. I'm referring to ex-members, retired members, former members, and also non-members. They don't live in a house. They don't have the ability to do what's ultimately needed. I'm not condemning them or dismissing what they have done or what they are doing, but their efforts will always be limited because, as previously stated, they don't live in a house. They are not connected anymore. They are no longer representatives. They are outsiders. And consider it to be on the outside. No disrespect, just a fact. Active members and the ones that are influenced by the activity and messages of the street organizations will never listen to these people. They know that these people don't and will never have the solutions to the difficulties we are facing, you, us, and the community. My company consulting and assisting in the deputy mayor of community safety and his team, we could take on the task of successfully achieving the goal, which is making our city best. We need each other to solve the difficulty that we are experiencing right now. Together, I know we can do the job. In the budget that I've built and allocated to this public safety, these funds need to be efficient and effectively spent. I have a plan, but my plan is for the areas of the deputy mayor of community safety, Gary Gatewood and his team. I'm open to present this plan as soon as pops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Benjamin Popovich.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Popovich. I'm a missionary at Family Planning Associates, the biggest abortion clinic in Chicago. And I am here to bring grace and peace to you from the mothers and fathers. This year alone, we have been able to witness to mothers, and we have seen thirty-seven mothers choose life. What a blessing that is, how wonderful that is. And I am here to represent our Lord Jesus Christ, who sees these babies as precious, wonderful, and fearfully made, in His image. Not that alone, we need to hear this message. And I drive an hour and a half away to come to this abortion clinic to provide hope, to provide resources, to provide joy, to provide an alternative. I give them the choice because we are able to testify to them from the local church and those that donate. And this is a need in our city where upwards of nineteen thousand babies are murdered each year in the name of healthcare and women's rights. The gospel is the message that we present to these women through oral tools of persuasion and proclamation. And the mic and speakers help us to convey that message and our prayers to these moms. The hypocrisy of this ordinance and of Alderman Conway is clearly seen in his aggressive behavior towards our ministers. In typical totalitarian fashion, he seeks to end our freedom to express our speech and religion. And this will not deter Christians away. In fact, it will incite Christians to come and minister and provide resources to these mothers and fathers because they have a choice here. They have a choice for their baby to be born, to live in freedom. And if you are a mother or father, then you will oppose this ordinance. If you support Black Lives Matter, if you support that all lives matter, you will oppose this ordinance. If you are pro-life and if you are pro-choice, you will support this ordinance because we are giving them a choice to these mothers. If you are a citizen of the United States, you will oppose this ordinance because these babies have a future. And we are the voice for the voiceless. Repent, Chicago. The kingdom of heaven is near. Amen.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. Before we move towards our resolutions, the chair would like to recognize the former Alderman of the Sixth Ward, our dear friend and brother Alderman Rod Sauer. Would you just step for us so everybody can see you? Thank you for being here. Your skin looks amazing. So before we attend to our resolutions, we do have four alders who have requested to make some specific special acknowledgements today. Just four, and we'll move through them with some expediency. The first alder that I would like to recognize that wishes to give honor to the civil rights activist Ricky Jones, the chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Good morning, colleagues and Mr. President.
Good morning.
Today, I have the great honor of recognizing an exceptional individual who touched the lives of thousands of Chicagoans and people across the country. Ricky Denise Jones was truly the best of the best. We honor her legacy and thank her for her life of service to the city of Chicago and to our country. If one thing can be said about Ricky, it is that she made change happen. She was a fierce advocate for everything she believed in. She enacted the change she wanted to see around her in all aspects of her life. Mr. President, as a teacher, as an organizer, and most importantly, as a leader. There are electives in this body that would not be elected without Ms. Ricky Denise Jones. From the young age of seventeen, here in our great city of Chicago, Ricky set her sights on politics and since then was a staunch supporter of all forms of political activism. During her time teaching at the City College of Chicago and then in Chicago Public School System, she committed herself to various organizations that supported her vision of equitable educational environment. Inside and outside the classroom, she was a trailblazer, working with the Rainbow Push Coalition, the Black Panther Party, the Black Panther Party's breakfast program, and many more. Ricky spent thirty-four years leading the Cook County Democratic Women. And many of them are here with us today. So ladies, thank you for your service. There, her impact was felt across the country as she spearheaded dozens of Democratic campaigns and helped launch the careers of today's largest political leaders, such as Bill Clinton, our very own Barack Obama, and Kamala Harris. Her national impact cannot be exaggerated. In 2008, during Barack Obama's presidential run, Ricky ran a campaign office out of Chicago. Her pivotal role in the Midwest is credited for President Obama's win in Indiana. Just this year, Ricky was chosen as a delegate for the Democratic National Convention in support of President Biden and Vice President Harris. I want to acknowledge Ricky's loved ones that have joined us here today, and particularly to Reverend Austin, her bestie. There would not be a time that you did not see Ricky without Reverend Austin. For young folk, frickin' Fred, they were always together. And Reverend Austin, we thank you for ushering her around town. Even when you didn't want to go, you were always by her side. So thank you. To the Jones family, Ricky wasn't a remarkable woman, and my thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you for allowing us to have Ricky Jones. Ricky Jones dedicated her life to fighting for marginalized communities and true equity. Her loss will be felt deeply, not only in Cook County, but across the country. Rest assured that her legacy will live on thousands of years because of the thousand lives she touched. May this resolution honor her memory in all ways that it deserves. And lastly, those of us in this body I know will miss those long text messages and those calls to call me because every call, every text was important because she was serious about the people of our great city of Chicago. And again, we thank you for allowing us to have such a great individual. Blessings to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Reverend Austin, to the Jones family for your time here. Now, Alderwoman Harris would like to offer up her acknowledgement as we celebrate Alpha Kappa Alpha Day and all of the members of the sorority who are in the gallery today. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you today for allowing Alderman and myself and Alderman Stephanie Coleman, my sorority sister here on the floor, to do this day. And I ask leave of the body to allow her to speak.
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Mr. President, to my soror, Chairman Michelle Harris, and all of the beautiful women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. The first, finest, and best sorority in the entire frickin' world and city of Chicago. I want to thank our sororities, especially Chairman Harris, for acknowledging the work of every soror. I've seen some golden sororities. I've seen some pearl sororities, some silver sororities, and even 176ers will be celebrating five years of service, but specifically the but specifically the action. You all, black women, we make up 16% of Chicago's population, but a third of every act of violence includes a black woman. So sororities, I charge us with joining our other Greek sisters and brothers and calling forth that violence against black women is recognized, that our young ladies that are victims of sex trafficking, that those crimes are being solved. And it takes the works of the divine nine of every member here in City Council, our clergy committee, and business community, but it takes us, black women, to bring forth this issue. God bless you. Thank you, Chairman Harris.
Thank you. Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Today, I'm honored to celebrate AKA Day here in the city of Chicago. And I want to thank everybody who's a part of the AKA organization and say I thank you for your service, for your commitment to the organization, and for making us shine really bright. So we bright shining stars. I wish I could acknowledge everybody here that's here with me this morning, but I'm gonna take my time and name the few. I'm gonna name all my presidents. So, and I want to thank them for their service. What we do as AKAs in our new part of our new life is trying to connect to government and so that we can understand government at a different level and that we would take that and use everything that we learned to build our organization and make it better. So today, from my home organization, Lambda Omega, I want to recognize my president and my chippy Cassandra Wattington. President, where you at? Oh, she's leaving. She was here early. I'm sorry. Our connection chair, Carolyn Hank and Paige, where are you? Stand up. Stand. I need you all to stand. From Kappa, from Phi Kappa Omega, I have President Tiffany West. Stand up now. I'm celebrating y'all. Stand up. We on our heels, but we gonna stand up for a minute. Phi Kappa Omega, Mariana Stallworth. She is the connection chair. All right, I see you over there. From Tau Gamma Omega, our president Camilla Womberly is the connection chair. I'm sorry. Theta Omega, Tanya Woods, connection chair. Theta Omega, Felicia Stanton, great president. Where is she at? Okay, she good. Okay. Theta Row Omega, Virginia Foster is the president. Virginia here? Okay. All right. Erica Austin is the co-chair of the Illinois Connection Chair. Are you here? Lambda Alpha Omega, Adrian Hawkins Turner, president. ABDO, Kim Harris, connection chair. Did I get it right? From Zai Nu Omega, Jessica Rhimes, the connection chair. Zai Nu Omega, Shannon Stradden, president. So today, my sisters, I appreciate our service. I appreciate our commitment to making Chicago and Illinois a better place for everybody, our commitment to service and working and embellishing young people's lives and changing young women's lives. So I say thank you. And I say that because as I look out here, y'all the workers. Y'all the workers. Let me say it again. Y'all are the working part of this organization. So y'all carrying it. And I really want to say thank you because in my role as Alderman, I don't get to work and be out there as much as you all. And I want to say that I really appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. I thank you for what you do. And I don't want to start crying about it because I'm really emotional about it. But again, I want to thank you. I thank you for your service. I thank you for your leadership, and I love you both. Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to close with, there is Brother Farad Ali is here. Where you at? There you go. He is president of Di Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha. And they are... What a great day to be here with the AKAs, my brother. Their chapter is celebrating their centennial, 100 years of making history in the city of Chicago. So today, I'd like to give a shout out to Zi Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha, where my husband is a proud member. So thank you so much, Brother President, for coming down and being with us today. Love you for what you do. And I think many times, I think sometimes I think I'm gonna be an honorary member too. But I thank you, my... Thank you again, Brother President, for being down here.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman Harris. And so that I can keep peace on the fifth floor, Mary Richardson-Laurie and Lori Lipson, our deputy mayor of infrastructure in our corporate council, also proud AKAs. For the last two acknowledgements, the chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez, who would like to offer up an acknowledgement for Inti Rami Day. Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like to just quickly recognize some representatives of the Kichwa community here in Chicago. Nellie Lima, Alicia Lima, Sandra Tituanya, Doki Lima, William, Farinango, and Luis Alfonso Lima. I don't know if you're here, so please. Thank you for being here. The Kichwa community will be celebrating in June 24th. The Inti Rami celebration is a celebration of nature, of indigenous empowerment, and we are indeed an indigenous land. So today, I have the honor and privilege to introduce this resolution to recognize June 24th at Inti Rami Day here in Chicago as a recognition for the contributions of all of indigenous communities here in Chicago that remind us the importance of the balance between nature and our communities. So I have the pleasure and real honor to introduce this resolution on a celebration of diversity and strength on a world that needs to hear more from indigenous community and the need for balance in a world that wants profit over people. We recognize the important contributions of all of indigenous communities, especially the Kichwa community here in Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Finally, the chair recognizes... Thank you again, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Timmy Knutson, who would like to speak about a memorial proclamation honoring one of our fallen firefighters, Andrew Price. Alderman Knutson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to recognize Laura Price and firefighter Eddie Buds, who we have here in the chamber. Last November, we lost a hero in Lincoln Park and in the city of Chicago. Firefighter Drew Price of Engine 55 and Truck 54 of the Chicago Fire Department. Drew passed away in the line of duty protecting residents in a building fire. Today, we're joined by Laura, Drew's wife, and friend and firefighter Eddie Buds. To Laura, Eddie, and the rest of Drew's family, we as a city council thank Drew for his admirable service. Moreover, the 43rd Ward will always remember Drew for the positive impact he had on our children, spreading the art of gratitude in the community every chance he had. Drew was physically active, fun, charming, and well-known to the kids of Lincoln Park as the hero who would give them the mahalo or hang loose sign. It's this one. Whenever he was driving by in the truck, an embodiment of his warm demeanor, he was purposeful in giving this sign to show that, a quote, "He was grateful that he was with you, grateful being in the moment, and grateful for all these little things that happen in life that might we take for granted." We can all benefit from bringing this theme into our lives. Drew has inspired me quite a bit personally. And when I see his memory card on my fridge every morning, it's a reminder to lead with gratitude. To Laura and the whole family at Engine 55, we are here to support you and to support additional safety ordinances that we've been discussing that can help the Chicago Fire Department, such as the ordinance that Alderperson Marty Quinn is circulating today. I want to thank you deeply for the positive impact that Drew has had on our ward and on our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Knutson, is Laura still in the chamber? Where is she? Could she... does she mind standing? Laura, do you mind standing? Thank you, Laura. We are very, very much encouraged by your bravery and your sacrifice, as well as your ongoing advocacy on behalf of our firefighters and all of our city workers in the city of Chicago. Before we move finally to our normal resolutions, and I'll recognize Alderman Mitchell shortly, I'm aware that, and I'm very pleased, that there are 11 summer clerks from the law department for their summer program that are here today. And I think this body would concur that we can never have too many lawyers. Okay, it's a very tough crowd today. It's all right. But especially our Corporation Council, in all seriousness, the statement certainly holds true in regards to having young lawyers who are willing and interested in doing work for government. These individuals could certainly find, you know, private firms. But I appreciate the fact that they are civically engaged in their civic mindedness and their spirit of public service. It's something that we celebrate. And we know that they're gonna have an enjoyable summer here. Could you, young people, as Alderman Lamont Robinson has already expressed today, would you, young people, mind standing just to allow this body to recognize you all? These are the young, future lawyers of the city of Chicago. Thank you very much to all the law clerks there. Thank you for your dedication. And now, again, thank you, Alderman Knutson. And now, we will move forward with our three resolutions today. We will be celebrating Pride Month and honoring the late Marion Robinson and honoring Women Veterans Recognition Day. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. President. I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered in the interest of respecting people's time of day. We will forego the reading of the resolutions and go straight to remarks from the city council. Again, our first resolution is celebrating Pride Month. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution. Thank you for bringing it before us this month. And I want to thank all of our guests that are in the box with us today. We've got folks from our LGBTQ2us community from all over the city of Chicago. I appreciate you all, one, coming to City Hall today. It's not exactly the most fun thing to make that commute on a Wednesday morning to come to City Hall and go through the hubbub of what is actually a very well-attended council meeting today. So appreciate your representation and your presence. But most of all, I want to appreciate every single one of you was asked to be here today because of work that you do for our community and our city. So whether you're showing up at a protest, at a parade, at your place of employment, whether you're helping to mentor young people or elders in our community, whether you're working in government or nonprofit or, you know, have started businesses that are part of our thriving economy, all of you have given time, energy, efforts, and talents to our community, and I appreciate every single one of you. I am proud to be openly lesbian, being one of the first, the first, black queer Alderperson in city council, but very proud to also... I'm not gonna steal Timmy's line. I'm not gonna steal Timmy's line. But very proud to also serve with the most LGBTQ identified council members in Chicago City Council. So for this resolution, what I would offer to all of you, to everyone in our audience and to all those in the city, is that while we have much to celebrate, we know that we still have much to fight for. And so as issues come up, right, in your space, in your parts of the city and your parts of our community, if there are things that we could be doing as Alderpeople in the city council or working with our colleagues across the side of the building, over on the county side, with our state partners, whatever we could be doing, if we're not doing it, please reach out to us. Please talk to us and please work with us so that we can be good representatives and make sure that we are looking out for the discrimination, the threats, and the issues that still face our community, even here in the great city of Chicago. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Manah Happenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you all for being here. It's exactly like Alderwoman Haddon said. Showing up is really everything. I want to thank those who came from the Edgewater and Uptown area, including Sister Mary Maker in the second row, and also Alexis Martinez in the first row. Every, every single one of you in the box is doing the work that needs to be done. As the first openly queer Filipino woman to represent the 48th Ward, one of the coolest neighborhoods in the world, you know, I'm able to do that because of the work that you laid down. And we know that young people who come out today, they're, they are not all protected. And many of them are discarded because of who they are and because they want to live authentic lives. So I want to thank you for the work that you do. You know, we are a beacon of hope for not only in the 48th Ward, but all of the city of Chicago and in Illinois because of the work that you do. People move here to our state and to our city because of who we are and what we do together. And we know that we do it because we love our community and we love this city. And we span across all race, sex, ethnicity, class, gender, zip codes. We are gonna be able to do so much together, working with the gayest city council in the nation. Thank you, Jake Widdish. And also with the LGBTQ+ Caucus and the Advisory Council. There's so much to do, and we're gonna do it together. Thank you, Alexis, for your mentorship. You know, this is the kind of work that we need to continue to do to build safe communities, to make sure that our young people have the resources they need, especially for housing, mental health care support. And, and we're gonna do it through love. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution. As a proud Boricua lesbian coming right out of Humboldt Park, I can't tell you the amount of progress we made as a city, particularly in Latino communities. I want to acknowledge two individuals in the box that did tremendous work in my ward, and that is Maya and Janeda. If you guys could just stand, please. These two women work at our Trans Empowerment Center on Division Street, right across the street from Humboldt Park, a part of an organization that has a coronation every year to crown a trans queen that leads the Puerto Rican People's Day Parade that just passed this Saturday. The only ethnic community to have a parade that respects, affirms the intersectionalities of our identities. Our queerness is not separate from our ethnicity. And we have the privilege in the 26th Ward in the Puerto Rican community and in Humboldt Park to celebrate all that we are. And it is women, like the women that are in the box representing the 26th Ward today that make that possible. But more importantly, women who take on the challenges that we still face today, the lack of housing for LGBTQ young people that are kicked out of their homes because of the lack of acceptance, the continued assault and violence against trans folks, not just in the city of Chicago, but across the world. We know that LGBTQ young people are more likely to be assaulted in a traffic stop or in custody than any of their counterparts. There is so much more work to do. In the city of Chicago and across the world, we still have trans women who are missing and have not been found. And so I look forward to continuing being... and have not been found, and so I look forward to continuing being in partnership with leaders like Maya and Janita, who continue to do the work every day. To be honest, quite difficult work as they navigate their lives as women and as they continue to support the trans community and the LGBTQ community at large. So I want to thank you for your work. I want to thank everyone in the box who works every single day to ensure that our communities are safer, but more importantly, that in moments like today and in the month of June, that we just get to experience pure joy. And so I'm excited for our ability to celebrate together all month and at the parade at the end of the month. Thank you both for being here with us today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Bennett Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No one wants to follow alderperson Fuentes, but happy to do it on today. I'm really excited to obviously celebrate pride with all of you, and I want to lift up some of the folks that are here in the box today, some that have been around a very long time and some that are new. So I will start with an institution, our community, who is here. Arthur Johnston, front and center in the box, was part of the Gang of Four that passed the Human Rights Ordinance of the city of Chicago in 1989. Eight, eight, which enabled the nine of us to sit here in this room and be celebrated today, thank you. He and his partner Pep have also owned Sidetracks for 45, over 40 years, which has served as a community hub, a focal point for politics, for fundraising, for organizing, and a couple months ago, he is a partner in the first queer-focused dispensary in the city which opened on Halsted. So I want to thank you for your commitment to our community for all these years. Thank you, Art. And I also want to recognize Jolie Robinson, who is the new CEO of the Center on Halsted, who came to our city in December from Texas, which was a very mean thing for them to do, but she brings a new energy, new life, new perspective to one of our most important institutions, I would say, in the community. We welcome her. I actually have, I was speaking with Alderman Cruz after the Young Men at Public Comments, and we're gonna start working together on that right now. So you've heard me say that the resources I have in 44, we need to have citywide, I mean it, and we can all work together to make that happen. So I also just really want to quickly thank everyone for their patience and understanding as we work through the parade. I think for those of us that host it, we know it's a, it's a full day, to say the least, and that we have to keep the whole day safe, and we look forward to having that this year and working together in years to come. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Timmy Knutson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. So I just want to thank all the leaders in the box who have been thanked here and just say, without y'all and without your peers and the work that's been done for decades, we wouldn't, a lot of us wouldn't be here. We, you know, we were the most LGBTQ plus city council in the United States of America last year when we welcomed in new members. I think we're at nine out of 50. That's incredible. We have a duty, therefore, to replicate that. We've got to replicate that feeling of possibility into our schools, and we've, we've got to replicate it citywide, nationwide, so that everyone knows they can achieve this. You know, when I think about pride, every person who's LGBTQ plus has some sort of coming out story. It's a very internal process than different identity processes, and often it can go on for such an amount of time where you're led to a feeling of isolation. Isolation lingers. That's why the mental health numbers are still very disappointing in the LGBTQ plus community. We know that suicide rates are three times as, as, as much higher when you're LGBTQ plus and six times when you're a trans individual. It's up to all of us to build that community, and whether you're LGBTQ or not, if you're on city council, I'd say you have a duty to say happy pride to your community because we exist everywhere. Spreading that openness, spreading that feeling is how we get these next generations to feel safer, to get those mental health numbers down. So that's how I'm feeling this pride. I want to thank everyone in the box and really just thank the people of Chicago for elevating those of us who, 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 who got elected to represent. So thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise in association and immense pride to be associated with this resolution. I want to thank not only everyone in the box, but everyone you all represent, the folks who don't get a chance to make it to the box or get to City Hall, the folks who need the help and the support, and those who have the courage to have a voice because of the work that you all have done over decades to allow that to happen, to push and fight against systems that have worked to oppress so many. When we think about our larger social movements, I'm grateful for LGBTQIA+ community because there's intersectionality that actually brings us all together in a way that I don't think we have understanding. We think about our own individual identities. There's a beauty and a love that the LGBTQ community brings that helps address a lot of the ignorance some of us may have had in the past, that we know society has had in the past. And so as our colleagues are saying here, really want you to challenge us to make sure that not only are we saying who we support, but that as a city, we're making that awareness, we're bringing that education that addresses the ignorance that still keeps people divided, that keeps people hidden, and doesn't allow them to be their true authentic selves. I'm super, super proud that Andersonville in 40th Ward is one of the most populated communities by LGBTQ siblings, and, and this year, we've worked to make sure that we created a space in Andersonville in honor of our black trans sister Elise Mallory, who's no longer with us, who did such amazing work with Chicago Therapy Collective. We will be naming a plaza in the 40th Ward on Catalpa between Ashland and Clark, the Elise Mallory Plaza, which I believe is the only place in the city of Chicago that will be named after a black trans woman. It'll maybe the first, it will definitely not be the last. We want to make sure that we have representation and that all of our people are front and center. So thank you so much for everything you do. I look forward to this year's Pride Parade. I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I'm gonna turn up, and I know y'all will as well. So look forward to it. It really is, for those who haven't been, you should go. It is one of the most beautiful experiences in the city of Chicago. You get to see everyone show that love out there, whether they're walking through the parade or all around, and I look forward to it and celebrating not just this month, but every month going forward. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
I would like to first recognize my friend, my sister Shannon Lynn Parker of Brave Space Alliance. Brave Space Alliance. Brave Space Alliance is the first black-led, trans-led LGBTQ center in the fourth ward. Shannon, thank you for all that you do here for us in the city of Chicago, but across the country. We appreciate you, we love you. I would also like to recognize the godfather of the LGBTQ plus community, Art Johnson, and his partner Pep. Art. Thank you for utilizing your resources, your love, your strength for our community. Mr. Mayor, Art's a teacher, and so he knows how to galvanize folk and get folk to do right. And Art, you've done that in the city of Chicago. Thank you, and God bless you. Ladies and gentlemen, I am an example of why we have to support our LGBTQ kids. We can't throw them away, we can't shun them. We have to be able to wrap our arms around them, listen to them, understand their issues and concerns. Particularly in the African-American community, we see high rates of suicides in our young folk because they can't be themselves. And I want to thank two ladies that are here today. I'm gonna ask them to stand. Number one is my mother, Mary Robinson. And number two is my...
Just a second. No more outbursts from the audience, please.